Good afternoon, everyone. Call this meeting to order. Today we're talking about the Cape Fear Rural Planning Organization. This is a continuation of a discussion that we started with the Grand Strand Municipal Planning Organization last week. So this kind of completes the information, enabling council to consider what both bring to the table so that we can make a decision on the 19th about which way to go. So thank you for coming, gentlemen. And Matt?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Town Council, and everybody in the audience and watching at home. As you just mentioned, the town has been extended an invitation to join the Grand Strand Municipal Planning Organization. Short abbreviated version of that is the MPO. MPOs are created out of census-designated areas to handle transportation planning and federal transportation funding for those areas that are designated. So every 10 years, they get to take a look at their boundaries and see areas that they reasonably might think would be encompassed within the next 20 years. So the Grand Strand MPO has done that evaluation and extended invitation to the town to join. Currently, in the town, transportation planning is handled by the Cape Fear RPO. They're a part of the Cape Fear Council of Governments. So that's where we're at right now. So what we have for you today is Sam Boswell, who is the representative from the Cape Fear RPO, to, just like we did on Tuesday for the Grand Strand folks, go over what the RPO does for the town, and answer any questions you might have. So with that, I will turn it over to Sam.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Councilor, Town Council. As Matt said, my name is Sam Boswell, Regional Planner with the Council of Governments, also the Director of the RPO, the Rural Planning Organization. And I just wanted to, I'm happy to be here with you this afternoon to go over what the RPO does. As a side note, to get me started, I have a tendency to like things in groups of five. However, I have a lot of things for you in groups of four today. That is my attempt to be brief while being thorough at the same time. So I'm going to cover what we are, what we do, what we've done, and then allow you time for questions. I'd be happy to take any questions that you do have. So rural planning organizations, rural transportation planning organizations, RPOs, were formed in 2001 by the state of North Carolina. These were designated as areas essentially to fill in the gaps of MPOs, Metropolitan Planning Organizations, throughout the state. MPOs are federally designated, and then they leave the remaining space to the state. North Carolina formed RPOs to plan rural transportation systems, to advise rural transportation policy across the state. I must admit also that North Carolina is a very strong example of what to do with these RPOs. We have an association, me and 17 other RPOs across the state. You have there on the screen our population breakdown across our three counties. We take in all of Columbus County and then portions of Pender and Brunswick Counties. Total population of 140,000, roughly even split across the three counties. Not quite as much in Pender County as in Brunswick and Columbus County. Another side note about the difference in MPOs and RPOs, as I said in a meeting a couple weeks ago, MPOs take roughly, give or take, 75% of the population in the state. RPOs cover roughly 75% of the area of the state. It's kind of our compare and contrast version of what the MPOs and the RPOs do. So, as I said, I'm going to go through the purpose and responsibilities of the RPOs, and this will kind of outline the remaining sections of my presentation for you today. So first, we're charged with assisting the North Carolina Department of Transportation in developing comprehensive transportation plans. Then we are to provide opportunities for public participation in the transportation planning process and the project development process, so once projects have been given funding and are moving forward in that way. We are also to develop and prioritize projects that we believe should be included in the State Transportation Improvement Program. That's the state's 10-year funding schedule of capital improvement projects all across the state. And then lastly, the catch-all, we are to provide transportation-related information to our local governments. So that first one, comprehensive transportation plans. These are the long-range transportation plan, typically done at a county level now. They have been called other things in the past, your average long-range transportation plan, sometimes thoroughfare plans. What they are to do is they are to evaluate the need for new transportation facilities, identify deficiencies in the system. We're also looking at all modes of transportation, not just highway. We consider bike and pedestrian needs. We consider, in our region, the ferry, transit, rail, aviation, their airports. This is not a fiscally constrained document. I guess a clunkier way to say that, it's more of a wish list. Once we get down into the 10-year plan, it starts to be fiscally constrained. But at this point, we're throwing in all the project concepts and recommendations that we, we being the larger steering committee that directs this plan, that we believe need to be further studied and kind of crafted and tweaked to then submit for funding with the state. If I didn't say it already, this is a 30-year planning horizon that we typically do these plans on. Currently, as an update, the Brunswick County CTP is in its final review stages and set to be presented for adoption at the beginning of next year. A note on that process of how it, you know, can kind of compare and contrast the way that MPOs and RPOs do it. The RPO itself does not formally adopt, we endorse the plan. MPOs such as GSATs, their policy board will adopt the plan. For us, our policy board doesn't adopt the plan, we take it to each of the communities and have their board. So hypothetically, that would mean I would be back here in a few months presenting the CTP for your approval, and then the RPO would provide an endorsement of that completed So second, our public participation. We have two committees, very similar to what you heard from GSATs. This is pretty standard across MPOs and RPOs throughout the state. The first being our TCC, our Technical Coordinating Committee. This is a staff-level committee. We have county, municipal reps, people from DOT, public transit. We have a representative from Sunny Point who participates, as well as someone from the ports. For example, this is a meeting that Matt would attend. And then second, we have our advisory committee. This is our governing decision-making body, where we have county commissioners, we have municipal elected officials. In the Cape Fear RPO, we do two county commissioners per county and two municipal elected officials per county. Alternates for each of those are optional, certainly recommended. And in fact, your councilman, Mr. Mark Martin, is currently an alternate, and I will say the, easily the most participatory of our alternates. We are grateful for that. So this, both of these committees meet roughly five or six times a year, and then we have other opportunities for public participation as needed, based on whatever projects or studies may be coming up. We also, because we spread across multiple counties, when we have larger things such as big project submittals, we will host, we will hold meetings for each individual county to prioritize and rank their needs, and then take that to our full governing board. This is not required, but this is something that we try to do as often as possible to make sure that we're covering the needs of our members. So our third category, prioritization. This is a big topic and a critical service that the RPOs provide in North Carolina. So the State Transportation Improvement Program, the STIP, like I said, is the 10-year plan. The way for funding projects in the STIP, as we now do it, started really in 2013 with the pass, passing of the Strategic Transportation Investments Law, the STI law. This is something that has provided a much more thorough and systematic process for submitting projects and getting funding from the state. I had mentioned in a separate meeting a couple of weeks ago that this really helped out RPOs instead of just the funding going towards the large metropolitan areas in the state. And the mayor asked for kind of a more specific breakdown. And so what I did is I took the current STIP that we're in, the current 10-year plan, and I broke it down by a number of projects. There's thousands of things listed in this long-range plan, so I had to filter somewhat to try to get an approximation of this effect. I filtered it by projects that are currently funded for construction, and that the funding comes from the Highway Trust Fund, one of the major funding sources in the STIP. There's nearly 100 funding sources, so you can really get lost in the weeds. And then I also wanted to narrow that down to highway projects. That gave me around 540 projects statewide funded in the STIP, 60% of those being in MPOs, 40%, again, roughly, which I thought highlighted if a population split between MPOs and RPOs is 75-25, the way that projects shaking out actually being 60-40, has shown a good, an improved impact for getting large projects funded in RPO areas. And specifically, when I say prioritization, it's simply assigning data and scores to a project so that then they can be more easily ranked and compared statewide. Obviously, it's very difficult for us to compare a Columbus County project to a large improvement in the Charlotte area. Those don't, you know, really doing apples to apples there, but that's what this process attempts to do. And then anytime you hear someone say programming, that's just assigning funds and a schedule to the projects. Those are words that we might throw around a lot. And as I said, the goal of it, just to be data-driven, to be transparent, you can go back, you can trace the steps, you can see how a project scored, see why it did or did not compete well, and trying to level the playing field across the entire state. And I do believe that RPOs have seen increased success in the past 10 years or so with that development. And then specifically, what is the RPO's role in that? This, if I were to break down kind of the main phases of a project, you go from the CTP, the Long Range Plan, to the projects getting scored and prioritization, and they get programmed, if they score well enough, get funding assigned, and then they go into project development, leading to construction. RPO assists all along the way in the long-range planning. We are responsible for submitting the projects. It's often guided by the recommendations listed in the CTP and other local input. Once projects are given a score, we help rank with our members how to provide almost a qualitative boost, a very local input-based boost to those scores to give it a final chance at funding. And then we are at the table along the way in project development, making sure that we prioritize impacts and are there for the planning and design phase. Now, this is a very ideal flow, I understand that. So some examples of projects that the RPO has been able to help get funded in recent years. Obviously, a big, major one in this area is the widening of 211. That originally got funded back in the third round of prioritization. That was around 2013, 2014, and is under construction now, as I'm sure you're more than well aware. At the time when it got funded, it was funded for about $63.5 million. If you were to check the STIP today and see how that has tracked out, this is more coming in around the ballpark of $275 million. Other projects, the intersection of NC 211 and US 17, that intersection to be upgraded, that is a project that has been in and out of the STIP in terms of when it gets scheduled. And that's another one that a low-ball estimate is around $42-45 million. It likely would be costlier than that. We've helped get projects funded for the Cape Fear Regional Jetport. They just finished a kind of a runway approach clearing project for about $1.1, $1.2 million. We've also helped to get funded a ferry mooring project over here at the Southport Fort Fisher Ferry, about $7 million. And then a $255,000 sidewalk segment in Southport, one of the more recent bike-ped-related projects that have been funded through prioritization in the RPO's project submittals. The fourth section, and the last little bit to wrap up my presentation to you today, is the various other services in terms of providing assistance to local governments that the RPO is a part of. The first thing I'll direct you to, on the left of the screen, activities like the Cape Fear Regional Bike Plan. That was completed a few years ago, that took in our entire COG region. And for example, I know it's probably a little small on the screen, I apologize, but looking at bike and ped options and recommendations, priority projects for Oak Island, looking at a multi-use path along Oak Island Drive. Then combine that with the NC 211 feasibility study that looks specifically at the East Coast Greenway as it passes through Brunswick County. That was completed two years ago, I believe. And again, looking at a recommended path of instead of just the greenway going along 211, as the East Coast Greenway Alliance had it designated, recommending that that come through Oak Island and be a part of the community here. And these are projects that were funded either through the COG or through the RPO to provide planning services to our local governments. And then the third thing, the picture of the funny-looking box in the tubes across the road, that's actually a picture from Elizabeth Drive up by Maymore Park that I took a couple, about two months ago, probably. We also provide traffic counts. We do traffic counts upon request for our local governments. And in fact, we just got an increase in planning funds this fiscal year that we're hoping one of the things that will allow us to do is even be more regular with our traffic counts. Just this year, we've done, that particular project was requested by Officer DeNoble, the Community Resource Officer here at the Police Department, to help check the Police Department's speed camera. They were doing a speed study, and their camera counts vehicles, and so, because he had helped me do traffic counts on the bridges earlier this summer, he knew that we offered that, and he asked me to bring the counters out to make sure that his camera was counting the right, the right counts, and so more than happy to do that. So again, four more points in conclusion. The RPO is housed within the Council of Governments. This provides a good continuity in terms of not just transportation planning needs, but a full array of planning assistance. Our Local Government Services Director, Wes McLeod, his office is right next to mine. In fact, with that RPO partnership with the COG, other, you know, it opens the opportunity for other studies, like my predecessor, Patrick Flanagan, and Wes worked on the yacht basin corridor study in Southport a couple of years ago. We also have good continuity. Alan Serkin is here with me this afternoon, who is our COG Director, as you know. Before Patrick, my predecessor, Alan was the RPO Director. And so we do have a solid base of institutional knowledge of how to assist our local governments. We have a good record of member participation. In fact, if Mayor and the City Manager recall, a couple of weeks ago, we attended a meeting with Brunswick Transit System, talking about transit opportunities in the beach communities in Brunswick County. That meeting likely doesn't happen without Matt. When we were planning projects to submit for prioritization this summer, Matt and I were talking about potential transit projects. He'd seen in the CTP that park and rides were listed in there, and so we talked about that. I sit on the board for Brunswick Transit System, brought that up in that meeting. That sparked the conversation of, we should get Oak Island, Ocean Isle, Holden Beach, Sunset Beach. We should see if everyone wants to try out projects like this. And that led to the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. And so we believe that we have good participation with both our staff board and our elected The East Coast Greenway Study that I mentioned earlier is a study that we were able to complete with special planning dollars that we got from the state. And these are planning studies that we're able to complete with a reduced match than normal services. The RPOs in certain areas qualify for, instead of a 20% match, a 5% match. We believe that's a good value for our, for our members. And this is a type of planning study, I've actually spoken with Councilman Martin on this, about your transportation corridor study with alleyways that the council has approved to do here in Oak Island, and how we might leverage those study funds to assist the town with its planning needs. And then lastly, we have a good track record with NC DOT. One example being carbon reduction program funding that is new within the past year. We've already gotten funding for sidewalk segment in Tabor City with assistance from Division 6 that covers Columbus County, as well as funding for a multi-use path in Bergau, almost $1 million for that one, actually. And we also have other good connections. Who, formerly the Division Engineer with Division 6, Columbus County, Drew Cox, who's now the, let me make sure I get the name right, the Eastern Deputy Chief Engineer at NC DOT, is a good partner and has proven to help the Cape Fear RPO. So we have a lot of good relationships with our DOT staff that make the planning process much smoother. So with that, I will pause. Thank you for giving me time to run through what the RPO is and what it does. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel?
If I may, Madam Mayor, Councilman Martin, as a colleague, would you comment on your work with the RPO?
I'd be happy to, thank you. I can tell you that the two years participating with this board and the group of people on that board has been delightful, collaborative. I'm always excited that they're willing to listen to Oak Island transportation ideas or needs, and they're receptive to helping us do a deep dive on those and determine if they can go to the prioritization list with the DOT. It's just a very productive and positive work environment, and I feel like, you know, in the last two years, Oak Island's voices have been received and heard, and action has taken place. So, you know, I'm saddened that my two years is up, because I've enjoyed working with this group, but that doesn't mean it's the end of the road for us. You know, I think there'll be opportunities going forward, starting next year, for us to still have some sort of representation with them if we choose to stay with the Cape Fear RPO. I just think that a seat at the table and a receptive voice has been very beneficial, and my suggestion would be that we continue that relationship, in my opinion.
Thank you for, A, for serving as an alternative, alternate, and for advancing our concerns and projects here in Oak Island. Sam, I heard you say, and I want you to confirm this, what I'm hearing you say is you are closer to the ground, more nimble, and your advisory board is more representative of a town like Oak Island than me, I'll call it your competitor, your other alternative. Is that a fair summation of the argument you made?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Not at all.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Alan Serkin, I'm the Executive Director of the Cape Fear Council of Governments, and as Sam mentioned, before his predecessor, I was the RPO Director. So I've got a lot of history, and, you know, I think something to keep in mind is, you know, as Councilman Martin was saying, you know, not only has Oak Island had a voice at the table, but, you know, Oak Island always has a voice at the table, and all of the municipalities that are on the RPO board always have a voice at the table. A, because we've got county commissioners at the table, so they're always considering all of the municipal needs. And then B, as Councilman Martin was saying, it's a very collaborative group, and they're very supportive of each other. And so, you know, for example, Southport has not had a voting member since, I believe it was Mayor Dove on the RPO, but Southport continues to get projects, because we understand that regionally, they're, you know, projects of regional importance, and so that, that still continues to happen. And, you know, I think the other thing that's worth noting is that the reality is that the Southport, Oak Island, St. James, Boiling Springs Lakes area is one of the more populated and transportation-demand-focused areas in the RPO. So we spend a lot of time focusing on that, and, you know, GSATs does a great job, I'm sure, but understandably, they're going to be focused primarily in Ori County, south of the border, because that's where the bulk of their population is and the bulk of their voting representation is. And so, you know, I believe that you've got a better voice and a, certainly a very open ear from us. I think, you know, being housed at the Council of Governments is, you know, we have an inherent interest in Oak Island's success, because you're a member community of our community and part of our region. And not to say that GSATs doesn't care about serving the transportation needs here, but, you know, our organization is designed to serve its member jurisdictions and not just from a transportation standpoint. And so, first of all, should you choose to join GSATs, I want to assure you that that's not going to affect our relationship with you guys, right? And the Council of Governments can continue to be your Council of Governments and will continue to provide, you know, other than the transportation planning services, all the other services that we can for you guys. But I think that, you know, mentioning Wes, I mean, Wes has a fantastic relationship, and we've had, you know, a long relationship with Oak Island, and so, you know, we think we're well-positioned to continue that relationship. We think we are well-positioned to provide transportation planning and services and to get projects funded. I will say that a project, the same project that's submitted for prioritization in Oak Island, whether you are in the RPO or in the MPO and NPO, that project will score exactly the same, and that project will be just as likely the same, and that project will be just as likely to be funded or not funded. What I think that we have been very successful at, and where we maybe set ourselves apart, not just comparing to a particular MPO or what have you, but I think frankly statewide, is that we've been incredibly strategic about how we develop those projects, what we include as the project. Maybe the project isn't the community's ultimate desired project, but maybe it's a scaled-back version that's a better short-term opportunity that might be more eligible for funding and more competitive, because at the end of the day, there are, I don't know, maybe what, 5% of the projects submitted for prioritization are funded? And that's the great majority of funding in the state is funded through the prioritization process. And so we have been very successful, we think, both in the area right here around Oak Island, but also across the RPO. We've been successful in the Surf City area, and we've been very successful along US 74 in Columbus County, trying to upgrade from highway to interstate standards. I don't know if anybody's driven to I-95 recently. The amount of work that we've been able to do, I, it's frankly, you know, incredible. It's mostly 70 miles an hour from Bolton to Robeson County, and really almost all the way to, to I-95. And a lot of that is because of this collaboration we were talking about, because we understand that there are competing needs across our planning area, and that there are important projects, and we have worked very well together as a group to prioritize projects of regional priority, as well as projects of local priority. As Sam mentioned, we worked very well with Drew Cox, who started off as the district engineer at the Whiteville Bladen County office in, in Columbus County, made his way up to maintenance engineer in Fayetteville at the Division, Division Engineer, and now is, what's the term, Eastern?
Eastern Deputy.
Deputy Chief Engineer. I mean, we've been doing this for a long time, we've got fantastic relationships, and we think we've had really good results. And the results that we've had are primarily in this prioritization process, which is where the major funding gets assigned. And, and, and I will say that that is a North Carolina process, that is a very specifically North Carolina process. And it is incredibly complicated, convoluted, and and fun process. And what we've been able to do is to really, you know, use our expertise and our focus on North Carolina, and our focus on North Carolina's processes to be successful in that funding process. That's a long answer.
Yes, I, I take that to be a yes.
To your question. Very passionate about this, so I apologize.
Closer to the ground, more efficient, more representative, and you added, more successful. Take your, your word on that.
And I, I will agree that, yes, selfishly, I, I go there with a focus on Oak Island, but all the board members are very open to supporting us. So in return, I work hard to support their projects and their requests, and, and make sure I contribute, not just for us, but for, for everybody that's, as they've indicated, we're all fighting for prioritization to meet our needs. So, and we, we do get very well support from our neighboring municipalities on this board. They all believe in us and believe in our, not just transportation needs, but we've been really focused on the last year on pedestrian needs for Oak Island. And so we're, we get the support, the support that I think we need.
And Councilman Martin, let me just say, although your term is ending as an alternate, that does not mean you're not eligible to serve another term, whether as an alternate or as a full member. So, you know, that is yet to be determined by the, the mayors of the, for Brunswick County, the mayors of the Brunswick County municipalities that are in the RPO area.
I was going to ask that question. Mr. Martin, I have no doubt has been a very good voice for Oak Island, even as an alternate. Does it go through the mayors for us to have a seat on the board?
Yes. So the way that the bylaws for the RPO are written, it is a caucus, is the term, Caucus of Mayors. So we bring, we used to meet in person, we have gone to more of an email format, because we get better participation. We're considering going back to an in-person meeting, now that COVID is well behind us. But the mayors from the participating municipalities in each county vote to select the two full members and the alternate that represent the municipalities in each of the counties.
That does not include the county commissioners?
The county commissioners do not vote on that. The county commissioners are appointed by the county, and they serve as the county representatives. And then the municipal representatives for those counties are chosen by the mayors of those, within that county.
Who are the two representatives from Brunswick County? Now, not the county commissioners, but the two appointed by the mayors?
So as of this past cycle, we actually have a full turnover right now. Up until the end of this year, the two representatives were Sandy Creek, Mayor Marshall, Lynn Marshall, and Mayor Protim in St. James, Dave DeLong. Those, both of those seats have, one because of an election and one just because his term expired, have expired at the end of this year, as has Councilman Martin's. And so going into next year, all three spots would need to be refilled. And I've spoken with Councilman Martin, if this were to be the case, it is, it's not written in our bylaws, it has been, I guess, tradition, so to speak, that when that sort of a transition happens, the alternate has become one of the main voting members. That's been the track record for, go back six, eight years in our records. And so we have spoken that, that would be my staff recommendation for when I meet with the mayors in, in January.
And it's typically been an extremely sort of collaborative and cooperative discussion among the mayors. And so most mayors understand that this transportation planning process is complex, and that having somebody with some experience
Continuity, yeah.
To sit, you know, to make, yeah, especially when you have full turnover of the Brunswick County members, having some continuity and some experience should, should go a long way, I would hope, in that discussion among the mayors.
One more thing. STIP, that's exciting. Can you elaborate on how, how that benefits us more so than not having what GSAT would bring to us on that?
Do you mean specifically in their direct attributable, direct attributable funding? That compared to STIP funding, is that your question, to make sure I understand?
Yes, sir.
RPOs are not given DA funds, direct attributable funds, from federal government like MPOs are. That does not
Big MPOs.
Big, big MPOs, true. Yes, smaller MPOs do not have access to that funding. Whether or not you have access to the DA funding does not limit your ability to participate in prioritization and get projects funded in the STIP. All MPOs and RPOs in North Carolina do that process. The DA funding is largely used for other planning studies, which we've been able to do with, with other funds, as well as smaller bike and ped projects. Similar to, to what, you know, I gave the carbon reduction program example, similar projects to that type. So I, I wouldn't say that it, it holds us back in terms of the prioritization projects, the STIP projects that we can submit. I think that stays pretty equal across MPOs and RPOs in that regard.
I, I will say this, though. The way that the, there, there are two sort of main elements where there's, where the elected boards participate in the, in the process for prioritization. The first is the project submittal process. So Councilman Martin, you remember, we met at the county complex with all the, well, most of the Brunswick County municipalities, and we went through the list of projects that we could consider. We were select, seeking project ideas from the municipalities and, and the county, and bringing that list to the full board for submittal. So every RPO and MPO in the state has a certain number of submittals that they're allotted based on population.
And road miles.
And road miles. And so and that, those thresholds are every 50,000 people. You bump up to a new, to, to get an additional submittal. So I think, you know, Oak Island's needs and priorities in this area beyond Oak Island, but southeastern Brunswick Counties, transportation projects are already being accommodated in the slots that we have from NC DOT. And so presumably, you know, I, I don't know the answer, but presumably, a question for GSATs would be, are there enough slots to accommodate the additional project needs that this area has? Because presumably, and I don't know this to be true, but presumably, they have filled their allotment of slots with projects for their existing planning area. And so either next time around, or, you know, what have you, they maybe get one more slot, submittal slot, or maybe not, you know? And so now there's tension between the project needs here, like continuing the widening of 211. You know, is there room for that? And do the, do the communities in, in Ocean Isle and Sunset Beach and Calabash and Carolina Shores, is it a priority for them? Now, look, it's not a priority for Suns, for Surf City or Whiteville either, but, you know, they've been gracious enough to include our projects for the RPO. But I think, you know, the number of slots available is, is an important consideration. The second element where local governments participate through the, through the TAC, the elected boards, is in point assignment. So we've already submitted projects, actually, for this next round of prioritization. And DOT is going to, you know, run it through their sausage grinder, and we're going to get our, couple of months, we're going to get our project scores. And like I said, other than the part where we feel like we're really good at designing, not designing, but organizing a project to be most successful, once that project is submitted, that project will score the same whether you're in GSATs or whether you're in the Cape Fear RPO. But then, the number of points that an MPO or RPO has to assign to its projects is also based on, I think, the same formula. So a project gets a maximum of 100 points. So, you know, again, does GSATs get another 100 points if it expands and takes on responsibility for this area? Maybe, maybe not. But, but again, you will be competing for projects, for points, for the projects that have been submitted, with GSAT's existing communities who are, again, maybe they share, maybe they don't, but there's already certain projects that have used their points, excuse me, historically. And so, you know, it, it may be that it's just that your projects are more competitive in the Cape Fear RPO, or that we have more points or more slots to, to give for those projects. This is a bit, you know, it's conjecture, obviously. But we're, we feel like we're doing a good job with the amount of slots that we have available, and the amount of points that we have available. And it, it seems to be working, and, and as we've discussed, there's good cooperation among the members with regard to point submittals and, project submittals and, and point assignments.
And one last comment, just quickly referencing John's point of acting locally, I will tell you that BSL is actively in our conversations as well. I think you heard the other gentleman say that that might be too far north for them to, to stretch in their scope of work. We actively look at BSL and how do we improve connectivity throughout Brunswick County, keeping BSL as a, as a focal point in that conversation and not excluding them. That's, that's, again, that's one thing I really like about this group, I can't say it enough, that we look at the bigger picture for Brunswick County, but we do plan more on a local scale that includes all transportation modes, right? The airport gets just as much time on our agendas as the ferry system, or 211, or, or even Midway for that case. So we, we do work with everybody in Brunswick County, not just the coastal communities.
Well, in addition to BSL, and Southport has already voted not to participate in the MPO.
If, if I may, a point that Councilman Martin brought up about BSL, specifically alluding back to our prioritization submittals this summer. Just as an example of the, the collaboration and our partnership with our local governments and with DOT, after we met in July to formulate kind of a county ranking list of our projects for each mode, specifically in bike and ped, we had, you know, our, our top list of projects. And then Councilman Martin brought a segment of the multi-use path that's been studied for here on Oak Island Drive, brought that to the table that we hadn't submitted yet, it hadn't been considered. And the committee talked and ranked it much higher on the list, which knocked off one of the multi-use projects that BSL had on the list on 50 Lakes Drive. Which then, even though it fell just outside of the allotted slots that we were submitting for projects, the Division, Division Three, working closely there with our corridor development engineers, Michelle Howes is fantastic, offered to pick up that project and make sure that we still got it submitted, so that the RPO could submit its priorities, one of those being the, the path here in Oak Island, without it being at the expense of one of BSL's projects. And if all parties weren't at the table and, and talking, I, we would have had fewer projects submitted, something would have fallen through the cracks. And so I think that was a great example of our collaboration.
I think you, I think you probably answered my question in your last comment, and certainly my colleague, Mr. Martin, answered, answered part of that as well. When I look at your coverage map versus the GSATs coverage map, with the exception of Topsail Beach and Surf City, we're kind of the only other coastal community, Oak Island, Caswell Beach, Bald Head Island, and so predominantly, your area is inland. And I would argue that we have different transportation challenges here on the coastal corridor than we might have inland. Certainly, people coming here come through the inland areas, but then once they get here, they can't go any further. We're the, we're the end of the road. So can you kind of speak to the, the challenges that you all recognize for the coastal communities?
Well, from a transportation standpoint, you know, other than maybe resiliency sort of questions, you know, I'm not I'm not sure that there's significantly, I mean, there's seasonal traffic, obviously, is a major difference. But, you know, I think, you know, I'm not sure if I can answer that question, but I think the flip side maybe to that question is that most of the, you know, most of the GSATs traffic is in the Myrtle Beach area. And I would argue that, you know, from my understanding of the traffic patterns of Oak Island, you know, that Oak Island commuters are, and, and Southport and BSL and St. James commuters are commuting towards Wilmington through the Cape Fear RPO, much more than maybe to Shiloh, but probably not so much past Shiloh. And so I would think that 87 and 133 and Midway, 906, are much more important transportation corridors for Oak Island. I mean, 211, I guess, would be up for grabs potentially, right? 211 as well. But, you know, I personally think planning for 211, Midway, 87, and 133 together makes more sense than splitting 211 off and, you know, and planning for more sense than splitting 211 off and, you know, and planning for that separately. Because I think from a transportation standpoint, it's really more about a network and how those roads connect and where those travelers are going, and maybe less about specifically inland versus coastal traffic patterns. In fact, you know, I would argue that, I don't know, most of your summer traffic is getting here through the Cape Fear RPO. And so, you know, obviously, less of an impact on the full-time residents, but for the glut of summertime folks, I would think that getting them in and out of Oak Island would be very heavily tied to what we're doing in the RPO area.
Thank you.
And if I may also provide a touch on that. It is true that the Cape Fear RPO has a wide variety, diversity even, of transportation needs. That was one of the sales, actually, when Patrick was leaving last year and recruited me to come from the RPO that I was at, was, hey, look what the Cape Fear RPO is going on. I thought, good sell. I might also even contend that, given the two primary coastal areas of our region, that provides, those areas are hotspots for our bike and ped planning focus because of the increased pedestrian and bicycle activity in a coastal beach town such as Oak Island, more so than, not all, but, but several of our other more inland communities. And I, I would also argue that because of that diversity, because we can't approach Oak Island and Burgaw the same way, for example, highlights and speaks to the, the flexibility that we have been able to show in our responsiveness to our, our transportation needs. I mean, when Matt asked for traffic counts on the bridges coming in and off the island, we had that discussion at the end of the summer and thought, oh, shoot, we gotta jump on that because traffic pattern is about to change because, because that's what happens in a beach town. And within a week or two, we were able to get out here and put counters down. And so I, I think that diversity highlights the, the flexibility that we're able to show. But it is, is something that I'm definitely mindful of.
And it's also maybe, I think the, the bike ped element certainly is a major difference between the coastal and inland communities. And the reality is that, you know, outside of Surf City, Whiteville, and Burgaw, we're really not looking at a whole lot of bicycle and pedestrian improvements, certainly not outside of the municipal areas. And even in those great number of very small municipalities, you know, a lot of them don't have the local match available, et cetera. And so, you know, I think we can, you know, from a, from a prioritization standpoint at least, you know, I think we can accommodate those bike and ped needs especially well, given the lesser demand elsewhere in the RPO area.
Yeah, I would, okay.
I was just gonna ask you a question about projects real quick. I mean, give us a feel, if you could, for the projects that have already hit the prioritization list, those that have been submitted and haven't hit it yet. And then what happens if we move to GSATs? Would we lose the projects that have been submitted but not hit the list yet?
No, so, and also just to know this going into it, when projects are submitted through prioritization, almost always it takes probably two rounds to get them funded because of the kind of uniqueness of the scoring and make, making sure that the project is tweaked appropriately.
And that's really two, two rounds at best.
At, at best, certainly, at best. It is extremely uncommon to submit a project the first time and have it score competitively across the state.
Although that Southport sidewalk did get funded its first time.
Oh, that's true. But no, once, once the projects are submitted, you know, once they go in the first time, they stay in the system. And so they, they would transfer with you regardless of the planning organization you were in. That bank of projects that have been submitted, either this past round or in previous rounds, would not become null and void for any reason. They, they would still be on the list, they would just be competing on a different ranking of priorities, depending on the planning organization.
And then another sort of detail of prioritization is that there's sort of different categories of projects based on a number of criteria. And so some projects will need to be resubmitted every round of prioritization, and that's where they, where the number of slots available for each, for each planning organization comes into play. And then there's a certain number of projects that are classified as carryover projects that carry over automatically that don't count against that. So, you know, again, we've been successful working closely with NC DOT, for example, when we believe that a project has been misclassified and is not classified as a carryover project. So for example, there are a variety of iterations of widening 211, you know, based on, you know, is it more likely to get funded as a long, big, incredibly expensive project? Or, you know, are we gonna have to continue to fund it in smaller segments because that's just the reality of the funding that's available? And so some of those have, for a variety of reasons, you know, numbers in the system that are consecutive or what have you, and where it's easy to identify that these are carryover projects, and others that maybe aren't. And so we've been able to, you know, make sure that, that we're maximizing that and ensuring that those projects do carry over as best as possible. But I think it is, it's incredibly also, it's also incredibly important to understand that, like I was saying, maybe 5% of the projects get funded. I mean, at the end of the day, there are way more transportation needs in North Carolina than there's funding to construct. And, you know, one of the comments we hear a lot is, particularly in a place like Brunswick County that's growing so quickly, is like, we should be doing X, Y, and Z to plan for what we know is coming. And the reality is, there's not enough money to plan for what's coming. There's not enough money to build what we need, needed five years ago, right? So, so that, that's sort of a reality of the prioritization process. But nevertheless, you know, we've, we still have been successful, but, you know, no planning organization is gonna deliver to you all the, all of the needs that you guys have identified. Hope that approximated it answering your question.
Well, the current, so the current projects are, and correct me if I'm wrong, what's funded is sidewalk improvements, and we're, we're moving forward with those projects and the DOT is, those are funded. Pedestrian crosswalks controlled by a traffic signal, those are also funded, right?
Those were through DOT funds, not basically the funds.
Right, not, yeah. But those are things that are already like launched, right? So things that are on the prioritization list from this past summer's workshop are the bike lane improvements for Beach Road, right? And so we can get the bicycles there safe, you know, proper distance to travel on Beach Road, the traffic circle at Middleton and Oak Island to relieve traffic congestion on peak season and check-in and checkout times, as well as our Greenway project. A portion of it, not the entire project, but a portion of the Greenway project was put on the prioritization list as a somewhat of a match for what we already funded in this current fiscal year budget, that first segment. I don't, is there, I think that's it that's on the prioritization list, right? That we're just waiting for scoring or those three projects?
The fourth was a park and ride shuttle type of
Yeah, yeah.
Concept.
Right.
And I believe, those, yes, those were the main four in the Oak Island area.
So that's what's, that's what we're waiting for scores on. But the good news, sidewalk improvements and pedestrian crosswalks are, in my mind, even though they're not in place, I've kind of put them behind me, and I'm focused on driving the future projects that are needed to help. And then Councilmember Cartner, just to extend on your comment, while from a vehicular traffic point of view, we're the end destination, that's why I've been adamant for the last two years to focus on pedestrian accessibility, because you're right, the cars get parked and then we are on foot or we're on bicycles or whatever it may be. We switch transportation modes for Oak Island. And we've been, you know, energetically trying to push things like the sidewalk improvements and pedestrian crosswalks in these first, these last couple of years. And so we've gotten kind of those moving forward. And so now the push will be to continue to look for, well, how do we create, how do we improve what I call our walkability score, right? That's a community scorecard that I even worked on when I was with the town of Harrisburg. We wanted walkability and we wanted to know what our score was. So I think that's a, a key topic for us to continue pursuing, is how do we make this community and improve the walkability so people don't have to get in a car to go shopping or go eat? You know, there's alternative ways for them to travel once they're here, so.
I give Councilman Martin credit for his, his leadership in this area, especially on greenways. The problem we have is the incredible lag between our planning and our funding and state action, and it is frustrating to the nth degree. And the other thing I'll say while we're on the walkability theme is all of our plans, even, even the CPAC plan, has always talked about a walkable downtown. But unfortunately, we've taken some actions as a council that has eroded that. And we have a fair distance to go to get to a walkable downtown, and it's gonna take effort and money and a strategic look at it, because ultimately, there'll be too many vehicles and too many people, and it's not gonna be walkable on it. We've heard that for the last five years, people come before council constantly and say someone is gonna get killed at 59th Street. Well, we're gonna have a crosswalk there, but it's taken, what, David?
Four years so far?
Four years to get DOT to move. So it's, it's like prioritizations, this is some business team process they have to get them to do anything.
And if I'm, and if I may, I mean, I'd like to take the opportunity to encourage you as a council to, to, to take those pedestrian bike ped matters into your own hands to the degree that you can. I mean, you know, if you're waiting for federal and state dollars, yes, you wait a lot longer. Secondly, if you're matching federal and state dollars, particularly federal dollars, which is most of the money in the system, the, the construction oversight requirements for federal money is so significant that when I was a planner at Shiloh, for example, we were having conversations about, does it make sense to accept the federal dollars or should we just see if we can build it with local, with the local match, with a local contractor? And not have to buy, not have to pay for an NC DOT pre-certified engineer to design it, an onsite supervision, onsite inspection to make sure that the, you know, double checking the, the wage time cards of the staff and the, you know, double checking the, the concrete dump truck load tickets, you know, just having extra people standing around raising, raising costs. I mean, granted, we, you know, you don't want fraud, but those things escalate costs significantly and they slow the process down significantly. And not to say, not to say you definitely shouldn't be taking federal dollars, but I would encourage you to, where you can, invest local dollars in local projects, and you will likely see results much quicker. And given cost escalations these days, the sooner the better.
I think the word choice you were looking for there was onerous, but.
That, that is definitely one of the words I was looking for.
Well, I just, with council's concurrence, thank you, Mark, for all that you've done and your advocacy, and I have absolutely no problem putting your name forward and advocating with the other mayors for a full seat appointment. Anything else, council?
No, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen, very enlightening.
Thank you for the opportunity.
That concludes our agenda for today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second? All in favor? Thank you all very much for taking your Friday afternoon. I think it was about time well spent.